I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 231, adequate others of this meeting have to provide as follows: On May 26, 2016, those who sent to the Holmes Tribune Star-Led Journal resource and authority to be dispossessed. By state law, there is no smoking permit in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, the Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items, not specifically referred to earlier, and as allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly meeting under the sunshine of the law.
Roll call.
Mr. Topaleski.
Here.
Mrs. Bellani.
Present.
Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Mrs. Viviana.
Present.
Mrs. Birch.
Here.
Mrs. Slater.
Excuse.
Mr. Worrath.
Here.
Mr. Colvis.
Here.
Mrs. Sudek.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the Committee of the Whole on July 21, 2016, and the regular meeting held on July 26, 2016.
Don't move.
Second.
Um, roll call.
Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Worrath.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudek.
Yes.
You're going to the agenda? Okay. Superintendent, it's important.
Thank you, Mrs. Sudek. Um, I'm happy to announce that the New Jersey School Board Association has selected the Linden High School Dance Company to be one of the student performance selections at this year's convention. Each year, the NJSPA does an annual conference for the entire state of New Jersey, down in Atlantic City, at the convention center, and each year, they pick student performances that are used to highlight the talent and skills of public school students in the state. And this year, the LHS Dance Company was selected, not only where we selected, but I believe, or haven't changed it, I believe we're going on right before the Commissioner of Education does his address, so that's pretty cool. I had the opportunity last Wednesday night to be the guest speaker at the ninth and tenth board community meeting. Had a, was able to meet many residents, some parents, discuss all the amazing things that are going on in our district that a lot of people don't know about. So I want to publicly thank Councilman Medina and Councilwoman Hinton for inviting me. And I'm always available, I do travel, I go on the road, I take my show on the road, and I'll be visiting all of the wards in the future. This week, we got our new teacher orientation. Mrs. Perry, how many new teachers did we welcome to our district?
We have forty-four.
Forty-four new teachers. That includes certified staff, nurses, and other employees. I see at least one of them here tonight, two of them here tonight. They're so very excited, they didn't want to just read the agenda online, they wanted to be here for the vote to make sure they get a job. It was, it's really nice, I think, that they would attest that our new teacher orientation is run very organized. We provide them training on our curriculum, on our technology one-to-one program, and, but most importantly, I believe, on the mentoring process. Nationally, almost half of all teachers leave the profession within the first three years of their employment, and that's predominantly because they don't feel supported in their district, in their school. But I'm happy to say that that's not the case in Linden. And I believe that's because of the support that our new teachers get from the board, from the administration, but more importantly, from their colleagues and their mentors, who guide them along the process. So, welcome to all of our new teachers, and welcome to Linden. We're gearing up for the new school year. Our second annual district launch is next Thursday, that'll be the first day of school for teachers and staff. It will be a tremendous day, looking forward to it. If it was good last year, it's gonna be better this year. And students, if you're at home watching, the first day of school is Wednesday, September 7. I know you're very excited about that, as excited as your parents are to have you go back to school. And Madam President, that concludes my report. There's a couple items I do want to discuss, the district goals, but we could do that, unless you want to do that now during my report.
How can we do it now?
Let's discuss the district goals. In the, in your packets, I have a copy of the district goals. Under curriculum instruction, as always, our manual goal is to improve the academic achievement of all students in all grade levels in all demographic categories through the implementation of year-two of our five-year strategic vision. Part of that process would be the creation of instructional leadership teams at every school for purposes of progress monitoring and data analysis. And another big part of that will be our new learning management system called CAMPUS that will allow students, teachers, and parents the ability to communicate, collaborate, and share resources. Second major district goal is professional development, and the goal will be to establish the brand-new Professional Development Resource Center that will be building the former Sunnyside Building for our special education office at work. And we will utilize that building for our teachers and staff to participate in relevant and meaningful professional learning opportunities that are driven by our district and individual needs. We have the technology goal. To continue our technology one-to-one program and to further expand the use of our online curricular programs, we are now at the end of our third year of our technology one-to-one program, right, Mrs. Perry? And we have, while we have a lot of curriculum online, a lot of textbooks online, we want to have more. I don't want to have textbooks after next week, so our goal is to expand.
But, for the students who need textbooks or they can't comprehend reading online, there's still gonna be that.
Always make accommodations for students.
We'll always have a set.
You always get a class set when we buy the electronic ones. Another goal this year is to create a central registration, a place for central registration to increase the efficiency and accuracy of the student registration process, and that will also take place at the Sunnyside Library, the Professional Development Resource Center. Another district goal, as it is every year, is to maintain a safe and secure learning environment in our district, including physical security, facility safety, and a reduction in the amount of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying through various school-based positive behavior programs and initiatives. Every principal this year has been tasked with creating a positive behavior program in their school. Most already have them, those who did will be creating them. And finally, a goal in finance is to always operate the district in an efficient and effective manner, ensuring fiscal prudence and proper allocation of resources to the various educational programs. Central administration will continue to seek avenues to contain and/or reduce costs of all school districts' expenses to best represent the interests of our taxpayers while providing quality educational programs for our students. And the goal this year is to propose a budget for next school year that meets or is below the established 2% cap. And those are the district goals, I'm happy to discuss them, if there are any other questions.
I have a question. I'm very excited about one through four, and six is, this is what we always want to do. When I just, and again, this is my first one that I'm sitting in and reading, so I've never read them before. It just seems a little generic to be a goal, and is this what we always put in security? There are no, there's nothing that we're looking to do? Or is this just what we do for the security goal of the year?
It's generally what we do for the security goal. However, I think this is the first year that we said we were going to try to do it through the positive behavior programs, I believe, and that's why I'm making them mandatory in school.
And what about the security systems in each of the schools, and each one of them?
That goes in with, that goes in along with that goal, but this is a general overarching goal.
Okay, so that, so this is just a general goal, we're not looking to try any specifics of this.
Correct. There are specifics in our five-year strategic plan.
Yes. So this one's more just generalized, got it? Thank you.
You're welcome. So those are on the agenda tonight for your approval, isn't it? That concludes my report, Madam President.
I think you've done your turn.
No reports.
Okay. Curriculum instruction.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, presents the following thirty-eight motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through nine deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payment for related services as per child studying team evaluations, determination of related services, adjustments to tuition, acceptance of classified students, and the approval of transportation. Item ten approves the enrollment of S E B I S students on a tuition basis. Item eleven amends board action on past CNI reports. Twelve accepts curriculum. Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item sixteen approves district field trips. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-five approve training for district staff. Twenty-three approves professional development activities. Twenty-four approves district mentors. Twenty-six approves 2016-17 district testing dates. Item twenty-seven grants permission for a staff member to conduct his internal internship at Soul Middle School and fulfillment of master's degree at Rowan University. Item twenty-eight, twenty-nine grant permission for staff and student groups to participate in district launch activities on September 1, 2016. Item thirty grant permission for Bright Computer Therapy Dogs Incorporated to conduct sessions with students at School Two for 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-one approves in-house training for instructional leadership team members throughout the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-two approves a 2016-17 school nursing services plan. Thirty-three grant permission for the Linden High School NJROTC to participate in community service events and all Linden public school activities throughout the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-four grants permission for the Linden Public School District to apply for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act grant award to support the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center during the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-five approves the use of the 2007 Danielson Framework for the evaluation of staff in the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-six approves the district professional development plan for the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-seven approves the revision of the bilingual waiver request for the 2016-17 school year. Item thirty-eight grants approval for the Linden Dance Company to participate in Linden's annual September-to-Remember event. Madam President, I move curriculum instruction, items one through thirty-eight, and respectfully seek a second.
Xavier.
Good.
I have two questions. Item number twelve is the SAT in the math and verbal. What do you think, do you review what was changed?
The SATs have changed, and they need to, there's a lot of common core on that now, so we revised the SAT course to reflect changes in the SAT.
Okay. And number two, the 2007 Danielson Framework, is that something we're in place, or we're changing it, or?
We renew it every year, we're using the Danielson.
Okay.
Roll call. You okay? You're good, I'm glad of this, thank you. Okay. We're good. Roll call. Mr. Topaleski.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Worrath.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes, however, I'm staying on number seventeen.
Mrs. Sudek.
Yes.
Management operations.
Mrs. Sudek, if I may, I have a report here that I need to discuss publicly. Board members, in your folders, you see a copy of a monitoring report. The New Jersey Department of Education came out to Linden a few months ago, and you'll have plenty of time to read this, I just need to discuss this publicly. It came out, do you think it was in April?
Uh, yes.
In April, visiting the Linden High School to monitor the use of our federal funds and the related programs associated with it. The purpose of their visit was to audit, to make sure that we were using the money for its intended purpose. They reviewed documentation, including the grant applications, program plans, needs assessment, grant awards, audits, board minutes, payroll records, accounting records, purchase orders, and our current policies and procedures. They reviewed all of our federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title III immigrant, IDEA Basic, and Preschool, along with the Carl D. Perkins Grant. And they reviewed records from the period of July 1, 2014 through April 7, 2016. Overall, despite the length of the report and the amount of documentation they looked at, overall, they found very little, very little problems. However, they give recommendations. And so some of the audit recommendations are as follows. We showed them a memorandum on district letter, can you do what we find in work? No, I don't think we made it. Mrs. Perry, can you help me with a summary of some of the, some of the findings?
Some of the findings had to do with just the way funds were used. For example, for a parent evening, funds were used for refreshments for a parent evening, I think, in a small amount, but they did not feel that the agenda for the parent evening fulfilled a literacy standard that they wanted to see fulfilled on it, so they said we had to adjust that and take the, whatever money it was for the refreshments out of local funds instead of the title funds. Another one was a memorandum that was written to all, all elementary teachers in regard to identifying Title I students. That memo, they said, should have only been sent to the Title I schools and not to all of the elementary schools. Those were some of the findings that they found, there were a few fiscal, everything was adjusted. We made many of the adjustments before the order was even finished with their audit throughout the week, and up to date, we have everything in compliance, they've made recommendations on these minor things that we must reforward it.
You'll see when you read some of the findings where they say, you know, we found this, but it was fixed while we were there, you'll see that in the findings. Nothing major overall, it was a good report, but please read it at your convenience.
Thank you, Dr. Lottis.
Thank you.
Management operations, Mrs. Bell, and Madam President. The Management Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item number one is accepting retirement with regret to hand to the Board, is Dr. Lottis.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Mrs. Gail LaBona is retiring after working for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years. Gail started in 1990 as a full-time paraprofessional. In 2000, she was appointed as a secretary, and then later, as a special education teacher. I want to wish her all the best in her retirement, she's a wonderful, wonderful teacher, and we will miss her. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Item number two, amendments on past Mountain Operation Awards. Item number three deals with the resignation of staff. Item number four, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight deal with the appointment of staff. Item number five, therefore the transfer of staff. Item number six deals with the use of absence. Item number seven is funding of, funding of staff through Title I-A, Title II-A, and Title III. Item number eight is to improve payments of salaries from 2007 IDEA Basic Grant. Item number nine, improve payment of salaries from 2017 IDEA Preschool Grant. Item number fifteen is to approve additional summer work hours for staff. Item number twenty-three is to approve change in degrees for staff. Item number twenty-six is to approve district goals for the 2016-2017 school year. Approved the, item number twenty-seven is approved the Superintendent's numerical for the 2016-2017 school year and submit to the Executive County Superintendent for approval. Item number twenty-eight, grant approval to create the Portuguese-American Tiger Club at the Linden High School for the 2016-2017 school year with Melanie C. as the advisor on a volunteer basis. Item number twenty-nine, grant approval to create the Badminton Club at Linden High School for the 2016-2017 school year with James Worth as the advisor on a volunteer basis. Item thirty-one, approve the lead teachers for the exchange programs listed below, to receive 20 hours, 20 hours each, at the contractual rate of $27 per hour from account 11, 140, 101, 00, triple zero zero four. Thus ends my management operation report.
Madam President, I move.
Item.
Item one.
To thirty-one.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and one to thirty-eight, can I seek a second?
Second.
Excellent. Roll call.
Mr. Topaleski. Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Worrath.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudek.
Yes.
Support operations, Mr. Topaleski.
Thank you, Madam President. Support operations committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following twenty-five finance motions and fifteen facility motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items one through six are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the Business Administrator Board Secretary's certifications as of July 31, 2016. No major counterfund has been overextended. Board Secretaries report for the month of June and July 2016. Authorization for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for August 2016. To draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name and a list of transfers and adjustments from the month of July 2016. Item seven is the Treasuries Report for the month of July 2016. Items eight through fourteen are to accept funds in the amount of $84,980 from FEMA for Winter Storm Jonas. Entitlement funds for the Sinai Christian Academy from New Jersey Department of Education for non-public aid. $15,741 from EduTis International, Lawson, Massachusetts, representing tuition for a set of student, MD, for the 2016-17 school year. $213.18 from Emerson versus Verizon lawsuit settlement. $66.79 from Ohio File Prints, Ohio File PA, representing a donation of $1,400 on accessories bearing to Linden School logo that were sold at local retailers. Donation of 1,140 T-shirts from Apogee Sporting Institute, Bound Brook, New Jersey for the 2016 Linden District Launch. A donation of school supplies from the Ciola Presbyterian Church in Clark for schools and other fire students. Items fifteen through nineteen are approved payment of in the amount of $82,461 to MAPF Security Group Elizabeth for the installation of the security system at the formerly known as St. Elizabeth's of Hungary. $37,850 to Environmental Remediation and Management Fair One for environmental support services to include McManus Back Summer 2016 Project. $9,480 to Dolman Relocation Group Newark, New Jersey for the relocation of contents of 100 a hood road to the leased property of St. Elizabeth's. Based on low quote, we see toward the second, a contract in the amount of $5,473 with Camden County Ed Services Commission for the transportation of student JM to and from Archway Schools at Co., New Jersey. Lease agreement and congregation, Hachahessen, in the amount of $1,200 per month for the use of their parking lot by the Linden High School staff for the period commencing September 1 through 2016 through June 30, 2017, with an option to renew in September 2017 to June 2018. Item twenty is to amend the 2005 Long Range Facilities Report to improve the purchase of property and construction of a parking lot on Elm Street for Soul Middle School. Item twenty-one is to authorize the Superintendent of Administration Board Secretary to negotiate with the owner of the property and purchase the property on Elm Street for construction of the parking lot for Soul Middle School. Part of the next Board of Education meeting. Item twenty-two is approved payment to Via Zerox to transfer equipment from the Director's Department at the Academy of Science and Technology to 170 Huston Streets, is listed below. Items twenty-three, item twenty-three is to clear the following surplus equipment, obsolete and/or unusable, to be disposed of in accordance with District Policy 3260. Item twenty-four is to accept funds in the amount of $41,700 from NJSIG, North, Safety Ward. Item twenty-five is to approve the following resolution in accordance with NJAC 6A 23A-18U5, new schools is not required to charge students or pay them a good meal in accordance with the kind of authority right here established by the Child Nutrition Program as administered by the New Jersey Department of Agriculture. Facilities, items one through fourteen are use of facilities at no charging because of by the elementary principal of Linden High School, Armelina Arrow. Armelina Arrow, Principal Soul Middle School, W. M. Stroud, Principal School Two, A. Cataline, Principal School Four, M. R. G., is Principal School Eight, S. Combe, is Principal School Ten. J. Hamilton, Supervisor of Linden Board of Education, A. Pavanostra, Supervisor of Linden Teachers, ESL, in conjunction with Alwale, ESL, and bilingual coordinated Department of Education. C. Borrell, President of School Two, PTA. T. Grissick, President of School Six, PTA. V. Hernandez, President of School Nine. J. Ray, Program Director, Prestige Prep Academy, and R. Hamilton, Director of Hoppers, One to Another, and Philip Skinner, Leadership Coordinator, Philip's base, Philip's CC6 may later be planned. And item fifteen is to amend board action on J.S. Support Operations Report facilities. Madam President, if there are any other questions, a further discussion of the amendments, one through twenty-five of the finance agenda, and one through fifteen of the facilities agenda, for approval, and respectfully seek a second.
Second, and I have a question. On CNI, item number twenty-four, what's the North Safety Grant number will be used for? I'm sorry, support operations, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the same, the same.
Oh, that's from, that's part of our.
Insurance.
That's what we wanted to know, too, but we need to school boards. Every year, we apply and we get money for the grant, and this year, we're just continuing the upgrade of all our security systems in the district.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana.
Yes.
Mrs. Birch.
Yes.
Mr. Worrath.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudek.
Yes.
Management policies. Thank you, Madam President. The Funding and Policy Committee submits policies for the first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on the full district policies. For first reading, 4111, recruitment, selection, and hiring certified staff. Added equity and employment revised content related to highly qualified, which is not part of ESSA, to reflect the state standards. Revised section on residency exemption. 4211, recruitment, hiring, and selection, non-certified staff. Added equity and employment. 4231, 4231.1, staff development and service education, dissertation, and services. Added a section on achievement gap and equity. 5114, suspension and expulsion. 5114, suspension and expulsion, adding minor amendments under implementation, adding content regarding ensuring that male and minority students are not disproportionately represented in detentions, suspensions, and expulsions required as part of the comprehensive Equity Plan. For second reading, 3570, district records and reports, title change for compliance with New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Urban and Enterprise Service, Records Management Services, School District Records Retention and Disposition Schedule. 5120, assessment of school needs, minor change in the meaning of dyslexia assessment, neurobiological, and learning. 9250, expenses and travel reimbursement changed to comply with OMB circular 16-11-OMB. Madam President, I'd like to move items one through two and respectfully seek a second.
Second discussion.
What, suspension and expulsion? You're looking at some of the segments you're.
We have to just have procedures in place to make sure that minorities are not disproportionately suspended more than anybody else. In fact, it's something that the federal government is keeping high, especially in regards to special education students.
I understand, especially for special ed, but how do, if they're the ones that are doing, a student, regardless of what their ethnicity is or any characteristics of them are, they're doing, how do you address that issue?
I agree with you 100%. Yes. I think you just have to make sure it's not blatantly disproportionate, and if it is disproportionate, perhaps it needs to be an action plan to address it, or see, maybe dig deeper, see if there's a.
Why is it, why is it coming from the second on the population? Roll call. Mr. Topaleski.
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mrs. Bedianna.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Warra.
Yes.
Mr. Colvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudeikis.
Yes.
Reports of the Special.
A few things. The legislature recently passed a bill which would provide funding to Lakewood for their busing issues, and I'm sure that's going to be challenged in court because that's giving money to private schools. He also signed a bill which authorizes boards of education to use electronic fund transfers so, for certain types of purposes, so we can start using our debit card, I guess. It's not just schools. It's not just schools, it's also other public enemies. And the second bill he signed was to stop Perth Amboy from moving their election from November back to April, and there's a moratorium on moving board elections from November to April for two years. So, that's pretty much what's going on in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Topaleski, there's no county information. Educational Services, it doesn't start till September.
Well, actually, because we had the issue at the juvenile detention center, they were able to resume direct instruction, they are going to continue finishing out the contract up to August 31st, and at that time, they will not be removed.
And now who's taking it over now for the care?
Yeah, they just, there were never enough security guards to keep the teachers safe.
Okay. Has tea for parents? You haven't made any plans yet for some?
There's a calendar that's being worked on for the school year, so we'll make the announcement next month.
Okay. And there's nothing for the students, we'll get that back rolling in September. And EST for special. I'm sorry.
I see the end is the time we do it first.
I just, I know we've spoken about it, maybe say, as a form, for the EST, especially for the parents, remember that a job in communicating what that is?
Yes.
Because there was a lot of confusion, parents didn't know that it was their opportunity to speak with the board members outside of a formal setting, and I really like to see the information maybe go out.
What I would suggest, Mrs. Bellani, because, you know, we send out the emails, and then some parents, they don't get the emails, I suggest that whoever's the chair of that committee do a full calendar for the whole year, and you could actually mail a letter to all the parents and email it with all the dates of the meeting, and then as the meetings come up, send a reminder email. And we'll put it on our website, too. So I can help, I can help with that.
Excellent. Do you have a reminder phone call? That needs to be kept for emergencies.
We can, but you know, but how I feel about that is like, I don't like to do overkill with phone calls, you know, we had that debate, our friend in Kettlewood used to do a lot of phone calls, and I feel like the phone calls should be for emergencies, because if people get too many, they kind of, you know, disregard them. So I like to keep them for emergencies or, you know, to keep them to, at a minimum.
Okay. Unfinished business?
Comments, just comments?
I won't.
Just a.
There will be. That's, I just ask if there's any unfinished business, any board member comments or new business?
Yeah, two things. One, Mrs. Bellani and myself happened to attend a school board sponsored workshop down at Fort Dix, Joint Base McGuire Dix, Lake Hurst, which was very interesting, and basically it was run by the Army Convention of New Jersey School Boards and the Department of Education in New Jersey to expand awareness of the.
What, the Army?
Opportunities that to be employed by the Army without necessarily being a grunt, without being a soldier necessarily. Most of the people who were there that were presenting had not been in military service, I think there were maybe two or three out of the 12 or 14 that were in the workshops, and one was a Navy guy who had been in for like six years, and when he got out, he got hired by the Army. And the Army paid for their master's degrees, and in one case, a gentleman's doctorate degree, and he had never served a day in the military. So that was a very interesting workshop. The other one is the board members, you should have already gotten an email.
Before you went to, I just wanted to say, you can stop that. One was that he was also very adamant that the Army would be more than willing to come in and do classes and workshops for free of charge, so I would love for us to take the opportunity to see what they can give us. And they pointed out that there were 20,000 open seats for technology positions that the Army is still looking to fill, that we don't have the people graduating high school to finish, to fill these positions, so they are very anxious to come into the schools and try and get them trained in the technology that the US needs.
Dr. Lortozzi, I delivered that information to him a while back, he's been playing phone table with a few people. The one program I really want, was interested in was the HIB program that they do, I think that would make really good, especially with. And the other thing was, the Army is also emphasizing that they really want to start to hit the lower grades, they're not so much interested in high schools, but they want to make the kids aware of what they need to study so that they're prepared when they do graduate high school to fill those positions.
In the intelligence community, not just like, and I got to use really old food.
Yeah, you got the MREs, we worked out MRE schools. Like the free lunch. Meals ready to eat.
Yes, for 15 to 30 years.
The second thing is, board members, you should have gotten the email about first county meeting, which is against town. So if you didn't see it, look for it, and please feel free to register, it will be at the Westwood, first meeting, it says Westwood. And Linden will be hosting a meeting, a county meeting in February.
Thank you, Mrs. Sudeikis.
Absolutely.